This is Juan Estrada with District Five United. I will go ahead and hand it off to Rolando with the City of San Jose's Planning Commission. He is Vice Chair of that commission.
First of all, good evening, everyone. I hope you're having a great night. And I mean, it was a nice warm day today, but definitely a pleasure to be here. Juan, thank you so much for the invitation. Really awesome to have this opportunity. So, you know, I don't know how much you know about the Planning Commission. I'm assuming a lot since you're very engaged and active as a group. In a nutshell, what the Planning Commission does is we're the advisory body that helps set land use policy for the City of San Jose. Everything from conditional use permits, general plan amendments, zoning designations. So in many ways, our job is to deal with what this city is going to look like, what these communities are going to look like in the years to come. One of the things that was fascinating about the Planning Commission up until recently is that the Planning Commission was very disproportionately represented by the western part of San Jose, in particular Willow Glen. So if you followed kind of my candidacy to become Planning Commissioner, it was a really, really grassroots community effort in making the point that East San Jose needed to be represented. At that time, literally only about nine months ago, East San Jose was not at the table, was not a part of the conversation. Candidly, was not really factored in any of the large land use decisions that are happening throughout the city. Everything from City View Plaza to the Google project that's coming up before us sometime, I think, next year. All of these projects have citywide implications. And if District Five wasn't at the table at that time, what was ultimately going to happen was what has been happening, which is the city decisions are made, we're not even a part of the conversation or the thought process. Therefore, a lot of the benefits to these decisions never came into the district. So I'd say within the last nine months, one of the things that I'm most proud of is that because our coalition, the community folks, because we weren't quiet, because we were very clear about the fact that District Five needed representation, we have gone from having literally no Latinos or east side representation on the Planning Commission to now having one of the most diverse, really combinations of residents serving on that commission and its street, including having a Latina as chairwoman, myself as the vice chair. We have, you know, a recent, we have a lawyer from District 10, African American. We've got a woman who runs her own daycare from, I think, the Alder Skirts of the Willow Glen area. So one of the cool things about it is we are really, you know, this fight really made it an issue to bring people from all parts of the city to make sure that all parts of the city were included. Now, what I always tell folks is that this shouldn't have been such a complicated fight, right? There shouldn't have been, so there shouldn't have been so much pushback to have that District Five perspective. But fundamentally, you're involved. The way the city's government structure is set up, the way the decision-making is made, I mean, I think we know very clearly that the overall apparatus isn't really done in a way that is much favorable to our point of view. And I think recently you've seen a lot more of an emphasis with a lot of us that are elected or appointed office saying enough is enough. We have to make sure that our side of the city is represented. Because I firmly believe that, at the end of the day, this city really isn't going to reach its full potential ever until every side, the west side, east side, north side, south side of this city are really working in unison. I think the way that things have been set up, it's been kind of this uneven competition where one side benefits and our side, let's call it what it is, is constantly fighting for leftovers, essentially. I mean, I recall too, when I was working at City Hall and we wanted to rebuild Fire Station Number Two, then Mayor Reed said there was no money for that. The best they could maybe do is a retrofit through political pressure, through political maneuvering. We were able to get the votes to get a full rebuild. Whereas in other parts of the city, you know, those are kind of normal day-to-day affairs that get allocated. No one pushes back, everything is great. So I think for me, what I see my role as is although my mandate is citywide, I think for me, it's very important to be able to always make sure that the District Five perspective is at the forefront. And already, you're seeing decisions happening at the commission level. Whereas before, no one took us into account. Now we're having to redo things in terms of how they come before us because I'm always asking how it's going to impact our neighborhood, how it's going to impact our quality of life. And as simple as those questions may be, if they're not being asked, they're not being taken into consideration. So I'm pretty proud of that. But I also recognize I'm here because of the commitment of wanting to make sure that we're at the table by a lot of you, a lot of you that, you know, recognized very early on that it was unfair that our point of view wasn't reflected on the most powerful commission in the City of San Jose. And through your, you know, knocking on those City Hall doors and making those calls and writing those letters, we were able to finally get someone on board. And my hope and the way I'm really setting this thing up is that I'm not the last one. My hope is that we are able to develop and continue a pipeline to serve on this important body. Because as we see, we're the only district in San Jose that has form-based zoning, meaning developers can basically come in and not have to go through the typical Planning Commission, City Council approval process. It's just kind of automatic based on checklist. I'm actually going to hold a hearing about why that's happening only in our side of town and not happening in the rest of the city, even though from early on, the commitment was that the whole city would do it. But it hasn't happened yet. So I'm having a special hearing and I'd love for you all to be there to learn about why this is happening in our side of town. And obviously, my position is until it happens in the rest of the city, we should have a very loud conversation about it not happening on our side of the city. Because just like residents in other parts of the city get the benefit of a full and thorough conversation with the developer or with people wanting to build in their communities, we should as well. So I, you know, can talk all night. This is what I do, I love doing it. But I actually am here because I also would love to hear from you, would love to answer your question. So with that, Juan, you know, I yield my time to you and would love to hear from you all.
All right, thank you. So I will go ahead and look at the questions that are in the Q and A. And then it's called promote attendees to panelists so that they can share their screen. And first up, we have Elma. And Elma, I'm looking for you, so appreciate your patience. I'm getting better at this every week. Let's see.
Me too. I had a vote last, go ahead, go ahead.
There you go. Go ahead, Elma, you can share your video and/or audio.
I thought I was just going to type in the chat. Hello, I'm Elma Redondo. Hi, Rolando.
Hi, Elma, how are you?
Good. My question was, when the Form-Based Code was decided for the Alum Rock Urban Village, was there any D5 representation on the Planning Commission?
My understanding is there wasn't. And I think your question goes to the core of exactly what I've been talking about. And you recall the fight, I mean, you were there, you were a part of it. The fundamental issue is that, I'll give you an example. About a month ago, I made a very, very big public statement about the fact that the city does not invest in candidates on our side of town. The city does not actively pursue candidates in our side of town. And I recognize I'm on a very public call and I'm saying this very publicly on purpose. I challenged the city and after about an hour publicly, they confessed to me that they were spending about $200 on Facebook to find candidates on our side of town. That's ridiculous. We're the largest city in the Bay Area. Our population is equally diverse throughout. And yet, the city has never really made an effort to bring qualified candidates from our side of the town, not only to the Planning Commission, but other conversations, other commissions and task forces and things of that sort. And then we're told that when we do get one or two of us, we should be happy. No, unacceptable. So to your question, that is the fundamental flaw that I see right now, that in a lot of this decision-making, we're just not there. And back then, to your point, we weren't. And if it wasn't for the noise that some folks like yourself made, we still wouldn't be there. And my point is, it shouldn't be that tough for someone from our side of town to be at the table. We're not asking for a handout. You know, we're not asking for a favor, we're asking for the same treatment as other parts of the city.
So how do you think the Form-Based Code got approved? In terms of no one, no one, no other part of the city has Form-Based Code, except the Alum Rock Urban Village. So if there was no planning commissioners pushing for that, how do you think it got passed?
Well, the way these things typically work is that they genesis within the city infrastructure itself. There's the city government and then there's the elected class. So these conversations happen initially at the kind of city side of things. And then they, of course, find or work collaboratively with electeds that feel that that's the right thing to do. Now, my understanding of it, and I wasn't there for that, but was that this was always supposed to be kind of D5 was that first wave, everything else was to follow. But we've been more than the first wave and no one else has followed. And I think fundamentally, that's what typically happens in San Jose. Because there's no consequence, because there's no penalty for doing what you want with our side of town, then you keep doing it. And I think that's one of the reasons why getting on the Planning Commission, because to me, this was never about me. And I think you recall, I said that to you. If I don't get it, that's fine, so long as someone from District Five gets it, because ultimately, that's the real end game. And so to your point, what we need to do is, I mean, I know Juan's now on the task force, the 2040 Task Force, right? He has that opportunity now to also shape it. I know we're going to work together on something as well. And this is where we have to also caucus together and leverage each other to make it very clear, not to our council members, because ultimately, they're, you know, they're dealing with the same things we're dealing with, but to the rest of the city, that we aren't going to just sit there and be okay with decisions being made without us being at the table.
And the last thing I will say is that Form-Based Code, what it means for the urban village development is that it only, the decisions go up to only the Planning Commission. And that's where the decisions, that's where it stops. None, the developers don't have to go to the city for approval. The decisions are made at the Planning Commission. So I, we understand how important your role is there in listening to our community in terms of how we feel about the developments that are happening, that are going to be coming online very soon.
Exactly. I think it's limited. And if we're not there, then things just get plugged in through no problem. And what, again, I go back to my earlier point, we're not asking for anything special, we're asking for the same. And to me, as we have, you know, when I have my hearing on Form-Based Zoning, I'm going to make sure to invite you all to be a part of it, to weigh in, so that I can say, look, this isn't just Rolando kind of on his own. This is, this is a sample of my neighbors who are saying the same thing I'm saying, which is, because I'm just, I'm just a vehicle for you, right? I'm just, I'm here to express myself for you. But to be, to be able to have you there with me to say, look, we don't think this is appropriate. We think if you're going to do it citywide, then let's do it citywide. But if we're going to continue making us the guinea pig, that's what we're just not going to tolerate anymore. So as I get that information, as I set my hearing, I think it's going to be within the next month or so, I'm going to invite you all and would love for you to be there to weigh in because your voice is not only at the table with me, but critical as we formulate these bigger conversations.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elma.
Thank you, Elma.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next question is from Linda. Linda, I am promoting you to panelist. Give me just a second. And Linda, you can now use your audio and video if you'd like.
There we go. Hi, good evening.
Hi, Linda, how are you?
Fine, thank you. I'm really here just to listen and learn. I had, my question in the chat was very technical, what is Form-Based Zoning? I didn't know. And just to explain why I'm interested, I'm with the group Mothers Out Front, Silicon Valley. We're a nonprofit. And we've been weighing in, we mostly focus on climate, but we've been speaking out for equity in the city and are feeling very concerned the more we learn about how inequitable it is. So I'm just here to learn. If this is a time to share that with me, that's great. If it's not, I can step back and let other residents ask the questions.
No, no, I'm happy to answer your question. First of all, thank you for what you do. I mean, no powerful group more so than Mothers, right? At the forefront. I know that from my own mother and also seeing my wife. Really, I joke, I'm the pretty face in the family, right? She's the quarterback. But Form-Based Zoning at its most granular, without getting too technical, is really by definition a form-based, so long as it fits that form that has been pre-approved, your whole level of processes and community conversations and approvals does not get taken into account. So in other words, if I wanted to build a five-story home in Willow Glen, you know, and I'm not picking on Willow Glen, just comes top of mind, I would have to then go through a community process. I would have to go through a planning process, much more detailed, much more rigorous planning process, city council process. With Form-Based Zoning, so long as you fit within the four corners of that definition, a lot of that is gone. And I don't have to build something that's aesthetic, that fits within the neighborhood. I don't have to take, for example, your group's point of view. If I wanted to build right next to your home, doesn't matter, doesn't matter. All that matters is that I fit within that. Now, the thinking behind it is obviously, it's fast-tracked. The problem behind it is obvious that life isn't formulaic. We have to take into account the nuances. We have to take into account the, you know, whether the facade adds value to the community, whether, you know, with this, by building something X size versus Y size, are we taking away a community value? Something as simple as an area to walk your dog may not be significant to someone coming in from out of town, but it is to you and it is to your neighbors. And it's also a place of community. So my fight from the very beginning, and I've been very public about this, although my role is primarily, you know, quasi-judicial advisory, I do have a platform and a voice. And from the very beginning, I've been very clear about, in my mind, Form-Based Zoning either has to, you know, if you're going to do it, if you're going to apply that pain, apply it evenly throughout the city, or in my mind, it has to go. And to me, that is fundamentally the problem with a lot of these things, that a lot of, a lot of the decisions get made, they get made in a vacuum. It's, you know, perhaps at that time, it's a good technical decision and it feels right. But how does it impact the way we're living and breathing? How does it impact the environment in terms of your mental state and what you're looking at every day? That's important. There's a reason we made the choice to live where we're living. And I want to have say in terms of what my community is going to look like in 20 years. The idea that I can come into your neighborhood and just say, hey, I fit within this criteria and build the Taj Mahal, beautiful building, but doesn't set right in your neighborhood, is completely, in my mind, inappropriate. And since you're talking about equity, fundamentally, the question is, why is it okay to do it in District Five first? To do it as long as it's been happening only in District Five? That's an equity conversation. And, you know, unlike a lot of folks that, you know, are appointed or public office, are going to mince their words. No, I'm like, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to tell you straight up, there's a, there's a very strategic decision to treat our part of the city very different from the rest of the city. And in my mind, until that stops, we're not going to be the best city that we can be. And I hope I answered your question on Form-Based Zoning. You had another question, though, I apologize.
No, actually, I didn't. I think that answered it really well and I really appreciate your straight talk. And I'll just finish by saying that you talked about the purpose of it was to like fast-track and just to call out that, that kind of urgency thinking is part of white supremacy culture and thinking. So just to call that out, that does not seem right. So anyway, I'm here to learn. I appreciate what I've learned so far, thank you.
Well, I'm happy to talk to your group. Invite me and I'll show up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Gustavo. I'm promoting you to panelist. And you can now share your audio and video. And good to see and hear from you again. As soon as you're ready, I see the, you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Can't see you.
Ah, how come? That's weird. I'm sorry, guys, I'm not sure why you can't see me. But my question was twofold. Number one had to do with the fact that we have the Planning Commission that was making decisions for D5 when we had no D5 representation. That's number one, how did that happen? Number two is, what are we going to do with all the new developments that are taking place in D5 today that didn't go through that process? Are we going to be able to go back and say, wait, timeout? If you're going to develop 10 acres, we'd like to have some sort of say in this before people start doing this? Because I know there's some developers out there that have acquired lots of pieces of land and they're ready to do stuff.
So let me begin by saying, just for my own clarification, are you Gustavo Gonzalez that served at the Alum Rock School Board?
That is me, yes.
First of all, good to see you, even though I can't see you. And thank you for your service to that school district and the many years that you served there. There you go, I see it, there you go. Let me, let me start with the first part of the question about these decisions that were made and how that happened. It goes back to what I said to our guest earlier in answering her question. That was a choice. That was a choice in terms of not recruiting candidates on our side of the town, not actively looking for candidates on our side of town. And let me tell you why I could say that. You know, when I was running for this appointment, I was very public about that. I was really public about the fact that I was, everywhere I was surrounded, I was surrounded by every other part of the city except our part of the city. And no sooner had we made a very, very public stink about that than magically, right? Magically, out of nowhere. And remember, this is supposed to be, and I'm winking here, a process where no one knows where you're from. It just, they don't review it that way. But magically, no sooner is the press at the doorstep at City Hall, we're making noise, all of a sudden, we have candidates from our side of the city that were very qualified. So you tell me, to answer your question, that, is that by coincidence or a very clear strategic choice to keep our side of the city out of the conversation? I think we know. Now, what's different is, most people that elected and appointed in office don't talk like I do. They're not going to call folks out because everyone's concerned, oh, no, if you, you know, if the mayor gets upset or, no, no. Look, if that's how we're going to play this game, then we shouldn't be here in the first place. So that is why I continue, and this is going to segue into the second part of your question. That is why I am continuing and I'm going to have a special hearing about Form-Based Zoning. And my thinking that if you're not doing it citywide, in my mind, we're going to have to either put a moratorium on it until it's either evenly distributed throughout the city or we completely eradicate it. I have a funny feeling that when you start applying it to other parts of the city, it may not be there much longer. So to answer your question, although legally, there are, there is no, you know, ability to relate back unless they have to come back before me for some permit or for something of that sort. Although there's no ability to relate back, there are two things that we do have, right? Number one is, you know, we have collectively a platform. And I think if we're willing to use our voice collectively to say out loud, we aren't going to tolerate this anymore. We want to have partners in this community that are willing to work with us and are willing to take us into account. I have a funny feeling, because I'm already seeing it, that, that people are going to want to talk to you, because let's be honest, I mean, you're a businessman, Gustavo. You know, Gustavo, you're not going to want to be in an environment where you're making enemies because you're ignoring community. Instead, you're going to want to have those conversations and see what you can incorporate. And what I have found, to be really honest with you, particularly now since I've been on board, when I, when I have that conversation, no one's denying me the right to have that conversation. In fact, they're embracing, that's one. The second is, to your point, you know, thinking out loud and really making sure that if things do come back before us, asking the questions and being prepared to push back and point folks to organizations such as this one to have that conversation. To me, that's how we're going to do it in the short term. In the long term, I go back to my hearing. I think it's going to be critical that we, as a community, come out, and I'll say it, come out swinging and say, no, this isn't right. We want to be treated the same way Almedin gets treated, we want to be treated the same way Barry Estes gets treated. We aren't asking for any favors, we aren't asking for special treatment, we're asking for equity. So that's one of the reasons why I'm using my platform. You know, while I'm here, I'm using my platform to make sure that all of us are able to have this conversation. I'm a big believer in conversation, but a big believer in conversation with a very clear end game, right? A lot of folks will just want to talk to you and talk to you and talk to you, but we're in the same problem 20, 30 years later. My end game is simple on this particular issue. I think people need to know at City Hall that District Five is not happy with this and that District Five isn't going to stay quiet about it. That's your capital. That's, as we've seen with my appointment and other things, I mean, recently with the Strong Mayor Initiative, right? The louder we're willing to get, the more organized we're willing to get, the higher likely we're going to have success. So I will let Juan know when I'm having that hearing and I would love for all of you to be there and weigh in. I like the idea, to be really honest with you, I like the idea of you all coming on board and talking because sometimes it feels like I'm the crazy guy out here, right? I'm like, wait a minute, what about our side of town? Everyone else, we're okay. Well, therein lies the problem. Right? When one side of the city is constantly saying, you know, why isn't our trash being picked up? You know, why, why is it that quality of life issues aren't necessarily priority? Why is it that developers can build without permits here? I mean, not permits, but without that extra level of really studying the issues. That's a fundamental problem in how the city is governing itself. And, but it's an opportunity for us to really take advantage of the time to say enough is enough. And my mandate is to give you that platform, because as I told Elma earlier, I'm simply a vehicle for your point of view. And I intend on really managing this position that way. It's not about me. My role, my mind, is that when I leave, you know, you or Juan or whoever else is on this phone call comes right after me and we continue that pipeline to protect the community that we love to live in. So I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Joe Mosley. Joe, you can share your audio and video now. Joe has a question about the former Orchard Supply Hardware site on Alum Rock Avenue. I have a little bit info after Rolando. And Joe, go ahead. You're on mute.
Hello, Joe.
Am I clear now? Can I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, yeah, thanks for inviting me onto this discussion. I'm a longtime resident of San Jose, also retired from the City of San Jose and worked in numerous neighborhoods, Poco, Santee, Gramercy. Did a lot of community organizing with the Strong Neighborhood Initiative program, Project Crackdown back in the day, worked with a lot of the PD. And we talked about, you know, people not being at the table to voice their concerns and issues. And I know back when we was doing a lot of organizing and getting communities involved and trying to help them steer and maneuver through the bureaucracy, we had neighborhood associations and neighborhood groups that still exist today that are very much concerned about what's going on in their neighborhoods. And for them not to be given input, I know when we had programs or projects that was going to be implemented, not only in District Five, but throughout the city, we had representation there because that's what it was designed, our efforts were designed to get people involved and create neighborhood associations. And it's just, I don't understand why there isn't representation when these developers come into these neighborhoods and get input from the community. That was the rule of thumb back in the day, and I'm kind of dating myself. That's how we did business with the city back in the day. And I worked with numerous council people and a slew of mayors over the years. And that's how we did business. I don't know how we deviated from that. It just doesn't make sense to me for development to come into a community without their input and listen to what their concerns are, their issues, and move forward. Prior to these programs that I mentioned, Strong Neighborhood Initiative, Project Crackdown, Project Blossom, the city's attitude was, we know what's best for these neighborhoods. When those programs got started, they realized and had a paradigm shift that, no, we don't know what's best for these neighborhoods, these neighborhoods know what's best for them. And so they need to be at the table. So it's just kind of strange to hear that, you know, this is taking place. And I was born and raised East Side San Jose, District Five, went to the high schools in the area. And, you know, we've always were, we always felt... And, um, you know, we've always were, we always felt that East Side was always the stepchild, uh, of the city of San Jose. And I can speak freely now, I'm no longer employed with the city. But I knew that was, that was, that was the sentiments back then where people felt that the East Side was always neglected and the other side of town was getting all the benefits and all the, you know, all the good things that was, that the city had to offer. And I also know that some of that is because we've become complacent. Some of our folks were just, you know, business as usual, it's okay. Until we started getting neighborhood groups, neighborhood associations, people getting involved. And now, you know, back then, things changed, but it still needs to change. And I can see that. Um, based off of your comment, what you were sharing is that we need more people still getting involved and engaged in the, in the process. And I hope that's, I hope that changes, uh, because things worked very well back then where community involvement was key. And like I said, there's some real good people out there that really, uh, wanna see some good things happen in their neighborhoods. And they're kind of tired and fed up about, you know, being on the back burner and being the stepchild uh, to the city of San Jose. And like I mentioned, I worked throughout the whole city of San Jose, organized in the West Side, organized downtown San Jose. I mentioned a few neighborhoods that I worked in with Poco and the Santis and the Gramercys and those neighborhoods that are really at a disadvantage. And, um, being born and raised here in, uh, in District Five, my, my heart goes out to District Five because that's part of me. That's part of my blood. That's part of who I am. And so I just hope that, that change. And then my other piece was the Orchard Supply, the Orchard Supply, uh, what's going on with that site? Everybody's asking questions. And, um, oh, by the way, I'm still on the East Side of San Jose. I'm still in District Five. You know, so, uh, I haven't stopped, you know, even though I retired, I worked in the Mayor's Gang Task Force. I, I did numerous things with the city, uh, and I'm still trying to be involved and engaged. And I'm hoping other neighborhoods, matter of fact, we had a few meetings here with, uh, Magna Linda Carrasco, Councilmember Carrasco. Regarding some neighborhood issues that I kinda helped pull together along with my other neighbors. And so, uh, I'm retired, but I'm, I'm not under the, I'm not under the dirt yet. So.
Right.
Uh, so I still wanna be engaged, uh. But, uh, again, I'm kinda jumping around, but, uh, I'd like to find out what's going on with Orchard Supply.
Well, let me go back to your earlier point about, um, how when you were going to school here, you always felt that, uh, your neighbors felt too, that this East Side is the stepchild of the rest of the city. And, and in many ways, I think that, that, that has part of the issue, right? That, that hasn't really changed. Uh, I like that you said, uh, that we have a role to play in that as well, though. I think we, we have a role in, in terms of letting folks know that we are organized. That we, we, again, I keep going back to this point, that we aren't asking for anything special. We're asking for the same. And fundamentally, I, you know, I go back to the, the story of Fire Station Number Two, right there next to James Lake. When we wanted to rebuild it, at the time, the city had no money, no money, we had no money, we have no money, can't do it, maybe a retrofit. And what we did was we, again, did what we needed to do and magically, it's just, just like, you know, finding candidates. Magically, the city found the money to rebuild it. And that is the tired story of East San Jose when it comes to city government. That when it comes to us, there's always an extra three or four layers, as if almost to tire us out a little bit. Right? If we can get to final, finally get to level four, then maybe we can get that particular item. But a lot of us maybe just don't because after a while, you know, fighting a bureaucracy is not easy. So I think that that is really at the center of a lot of this, that you have to continue being organized, you have to continue being loud. We have to continue making it very clear that we're not just gonna roll over and be okay with that. And I think again, recently you saw, for example, with the, the mayor's, uh, Strong Mayor Initiative, whether you're for it or against it, which did see is, um, that when folks came together, uh, that was really an East Side-driven conversation, right? When folks came together and said, wait a minute, you know, we're not a part of the conversation, we're not a part of the dialogue, we're not a part of any of that. It was actually removed. And I think now what they're doing is a commission that's gonna talk about it and, and study it and, and give the space for public comment. You know, and as far as the Orchard Supply building in particular, uh, I, what, what I will say is that's an example of exactly what I'm talking about. That whole Alum Rock Village, right? That whole corridor. I mean, let's be honest, a lot of our businesses there are in need of some support to help them, you know, upgrade the buildings, to help, you know, create an environment that, that helps their businesses flourish and prosper. And yet that doesn't happen. When I could tell you from my time at City Hall, there are plenty of examples throughout the city. Where $6 million, $5 million, $3 million are given to, to private landowners. Uh, to upgrade their facilities in order to make them much more aesthetically pleasing for the community. Yet when it comes to us, those opportunities aren't there. Uh, and again, I think it is our job to call out those moments and say, if we're doing that in other parts of the city. We need the same type of investment on our side of the city. These aren't handouts. These are investments that will also increase tax revenue, as we saw with Story and King. When you spend the dollars to help really bring these buildings up to their true potential and give these businesses the best chance to flourish. You're gonna get a better return on your investment. And in the process, you also strengthen and improve the community. The city has a role in that, uh, and the city should be participating in that financially. Juan, did you wanna jump in and talk more so about the, I know you said you had some information about the Orchard Building, uh, wanted to give you the.
Yes, um, I, I just wanted to know, I spoke to the property management company yesterday. Uh, because as you're probably aware, Joe, there was a lot of illegal dumping behind it on Rose Avenue. Uh, it was a mess and, um, they took swift action. And it is now clean. Drive down Rose and they really cleaned it up. There's nothing left. Um, when I went by a gentleman that was there, was packing up and leaving. And so I actually called them back today just to thank them for addressing it so quickly. The property management company, when I called, wanted to know if I was interested in leasing or buying. And so it sounds like they're selling, uh, the locations or leasing as necessary. Um, and of course I explained to them it was in their best interest to clean it up. I think they just weren't aware. They may, may not be local. Um, and, um, so it, it sounds like it will be leased or sold. Uh, at the very least, the property management company and the owner of the property are now aware that it wasn't being maintained and, uh, it's been cleaned up.
Okay, so the, the dumping, uh, is, is another issue. We get that throughout the city. Uh, but my, my, my question was, do we know what's coming into that site? Uh, or, or not? Cause that's, that's what people are asking. You're on mute.
Yeah, sorry about that. But we, we don't because again, it was, uh, property management company, there's a real tour involved. And they're looking to lease or sell, it sounds like.
Yeah, and on my end, I had not officially heard anything, uh, to Juan's point. You know, we have heard about leasing, selling, but we have no confirmation of any business coming in at the moment.
And then the last thing I wanna mention, cause I don't wanna dominate this conversation. I know when we had the redevelopment agency, there was a lot of money that was being poured into these neighborhoods and also the business districts. And I know that really hurt us when they took the redevelopment or the redevelopment agency kind of folded. And, uh, there was no more money allocated to that, that source. Uh, but I know, you know, like you said, all, you know, all of a sudden you can find some things if you look hard enough. Um, things that can be directed toward, uh, District Five and, and even District Seven. Be quite honest, District Five and Seven have always been that kind of a, so, but like I said, you know, uh, those, those are my concerns and, uh, and, uh, I'm just thankful that you guys allowed me to come in and join with you. Uh, like I said, I, I've been retired now for about 10, 11 years and I've worked with the city for 20 years and I, most of my work was done in community organizing and, and a lot of our challenged neighborhoods. And I know how, uh, how important that is to get people involved and engage in the process so that they're not put on the back burner and, uh, we can see some progress in District Five.
Well, Joe, I, my, my commitment, Joe, is, uh, using the platform that I have at City Hall. Uh, I wanna definitely have a lot of official, uh, District Five conversations with, in, on subject matter within my purview. Uh, so again, as I've been saying throughout, I invite you all, I'll let you all know when those conversations are happening. And I'll be upfront and tell you, I, I need you there. And, uh, I think collectively, we could definitely do a lot together as, as a community. So thank you for your volunteerism too.
No worries. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Daniel. Daniel, feel free to share your audio and video to ask your question.
While we're, oh, there we go. Thank you. Um, I'm an activist. I live in, uh, Evergreen area. There has to be a plan that is proactive throughout the east where all the different districts leaders, um, come together within the communities and throughout the communities as a, as a unit. Not that District Five, not that District Eight, but East districts. That we come together and when you speak or Sylvia speak or other reps, they're speaking on behalf of all of the East of San Jose. And if you're given the baton to, to speak at one time, you're representing all of the East of San Jose. And I wrote a question also, is we have to have a, a way in which we groom future generations to be leaders. By you, all of you representatives, go to the young people at the high schools. And bring them to your offices and start telling them and showing them how the bureaucracy works. Because otherwise, it's like the first immigrant that comes, I'm speaking like a Mexican. They, a lot of our people come and they don't know how the educational system works. So they're left out of it. The same thing happens in the government. If our people do not know how the system works, their children are not gonna know. And it's a continuing rotating wheel that doesn't take traction. And when you leave, how can we assure that in 10, 15, 20 years, we have a, a command of, uh, of young people ready to take your seat, your place?
Right.
And look at the future. You're doing the present right now. My concern is, uh, what's gonna happen to the future generations? If they don't know their story, they're gonna repeat it again. That's my input.
I think that, and I think your, your point is more than well taken. Uh, if you recall in the beginning of the conversation, one of the things I said was, to me, it's important to have, to your point, that pipeline. Uh, and it's funny because when I started, I was already scheduling. Uh, I had some high school students that, uh, their teachers wanted to come out and see me and, you know, come to City Hall. We were already doing that. And unfortunately, the pandemic hit, uh, and we've all been sheltered in place. But I can assure you, I agree 110% with you on, on both fronts that you made. Number one, we need to have a much more unified collective East conversation. I agree. And, and one A, uh, we have to have a pipeline because your, you know, your point is right on. My concern is who's after me? Right? And so for me, that's why while I'm here, my job is to create that platform, that space. Uh, to bring you all into, into that space so that it's a part of you. And when it's time to say who's next, we can say, there's a group of us here in District Five, District Eight, District Seven. Who, who have demonstrated not only a commitment to the topic, but a desire to really be involved at this level. And no one can say, oh, we couldn't find them. Where are they? You know, we spent, whoa, a whopping $200 for a city of a million people. And we can't find them. Well, my job is to put them in their face and say, they're right there. So when I leave, my ultimate measure of success is when I leave, making sure that not only have we moved the, the East conversation forward and actually have been able to get some substantial wins in that. But bigger than that, because this isn't about one person, is that we have that pipeline ready to step into these roles, ready to be in this decision-making process. So in the end, you are 100% right. Uh, and I can tell you that when we get out of COVID, uh, you know, hopefully soon. Uh, I wanna resume what I was initiating before we were sheltered in place, which is to really tap into folks like this and, uh, and schools. Uh, to really be a part of the conversation. And get appointed and become department heads and, you know, be the head of, you know, finance and be the head of planning. And, you know, we need more of ourselves within that part of the government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's, it's getting pretty late into the meeting. And so for the next, uh, few questions, um, brevity is helpful. I've just promoted Bibiana to panelist. Bibiana, go ahead and ask your question. For Rolando, I know you have another question for Captain Tao. We'll address that one later.
Yes. So we are recent homeowners here on the east side of things. And thank you. Um, we have not been on a commission. We have no experience with handling city. But what we do have experience is in community. And one of the things that we find in our community is a lack of education of the homeowners of, um, policies and procedures for a safe street, safe neighborhoods. Um, the lack of care, um, for street cleaning, um, security, uh, police presence, um, in that if rules are not enforced and they go, oh, there's no reason to have the rules because nobody comes. We can go as fast as we want. We don't care until what's the city gonna do? Wait till we have little kids get hurt because we've had racing cars going up and down Story and Clayton. So the question is, on the planning commission, what are your objectives for this year? We do not have to play victim, but if we assert to be strong and elevated in our attitude and place that East Side is beautiful and we are strong together. And these are our objectives. And this is what we wanna see for ours. I don't care about the rest of the, the city per se. But if we have a dialogue, what is that on the planning commission? Will there be dog parks? Will there be places where people will actually feel safe on their street?
So first of all, it sounds like you're my neighbor, Bibiana. You talked about Story and Clayton, um, right up the street on Feller. Uh, so, uh, we're, we're next door basically. Uh, I'll give you an example. You brought up dog parks. Uh, my second meeting on the commission, I don't know if you're familiar with that old VTA park and ride lot across the street from the cemetery? So I voted against, uh, there's a proposal there to build, um, micro condos. And if you've been to that lot, you know, I honestly don't know how it's even possible. But again, the idea being, would you offer these micro condos in other parts of the city? Now, I don't say that to, to your point, victimize ourselves. I don't believe in that. But I do say it because it is a point of reference and context. So I fought for it, fought against it, uh, made it a point to say on the record, I, number one, I think we're gonna need a lot of community conversation. If this thing even happens. And number one, A, I don't want it to happen. So one of the things that I suggested with one of my colleagues and, and, and the motion went up to the city council with this. Is that the city buy that park and ride lot to actually turn it into a little pocket park. And that, and that's the thing that we're, I'm trying to do different. You know, at planning, you know, you're constantly told that you have to live within the four corners of the codes. But the reality is if that were the case, you don't need a commission, you need a checklist. You know, I, I, my role is to use my legal background to find ways, creative ways. By which to come at, to get these situations and opportunities and create things that are going to improve our quality of life. Now, I think we could all agree, having about 100 micro units on that really small sliver of land is not going to add any real value to our community. What is going to add value, in fact, is something as simple as a pocket park. Because it's something, it's green, it's space, it's aimed towards, you know, enhancing quality of life. And that's really my number one mandate right now in year one. My number one mandate is to put a brick on things that are intended for our district. And to, and to make it a requirement that we have to have a conversation with our community first. Before I even consider wanting to actually have them in. before I even consider wanting to actually have them in front of me. Because to me, that is the only way by which we're going to determine whether or not these are going to be good partnerships for our neighborhood. Good partnerships for, for, for really the rest of our district as a whole. So that is my mandate right now. That and of course, form-based zoning, because it all ties into what you're talking about. If I don't have to worry about what a building feels and looks like in a community, then I also don't have to worry about the negative kind of ripple effects that come from that. Everything from, you know, less parking, more traffic, less places for our kids to play. That to me, right now, is my number one mandate to really be on top of these projects and make sure that quality of life in your voice, and I don't mean your voice through me. I mean, your voice as in they actually took the time to listen to you, actually took the time to take it and take your, your point of view into consideration. As far as saying, you know what, this community doesn't think this is a good fit, maybe we're not interested anymore. That to me is a conversation that has to happen at your level. And my job is to drive it to you so that you're at the table talking about the very things you're talking with me about tonight.
All right, Bibiana, thank you for the question.
Let me also give you all my Facebook handle. That is a great way to get ahold of me fast. I think Juan, you know it. It's the at sign S J Rolando, R O L A N D O. Go ahead and follow me on that page, message me. I do personally respond to those messages. It's not an automated system. So I'll say it again. It's the at sign S J Rolando, R O L A N D O. And follow me, interact with me. I would love to continue hearing from you. But in the meantime, I'm here now and happy to answer some questions.
All right. So Paul Zuniga, I'll go ahead and read your question even as I promote you to panelists. And does the planning commissioner get involved in street paving in neighborhoods?
The answer is we do not from a legislative standpoint, we, we do not. But again, my, the way I view my role is that it is critical that we use that platform. So what I mean by that is although legislatively legally I'm mandated to actual planning issues, I can't ask questions and have conversations about, this goes back to form-based zoning and how these projects will impact overall quality of life, parking, paving, stop signs, all those questions. But, uh, so that is how I exercise the authority vested in me through this office. But equally, as a citizen and a member of the community, I equally use that platform to make issues such as the one that you're raising top of mind at city hall. So if there are issues like that, that you feel you need some support, reach out to me. Like I gave you the Facebook way, message me that way. And I'm happy to help you in any way that I can by which to meet whatever needed is you feel you need at the moment.
I did come across, you know, a list of streets that were going to be paved, which is fine. It was great. But the thing is, is that I've noticed that in the east side, in certain neighborhoods like ours, instead of, you know, paving with a smooth surface, we get the tar and the gravel. We haven't had that done in close to 20 years now and our streets are falling apart. So I was concerned, is there a way or a method to try to push to get the same street pavement that the west side gets, you know, in there or even in the Evergreen area?
Yeah. No, that's a great question. And it goes back to what we've been talking about tonight. Here's what I can do. I can definitely raise it as an issue when we talk about infrastructure, particularly when there's a project. I know there's a couple of projects coming my way. And that gives me, East San Jose projects, that gives me the space to actually ask this question. But equally, equally, I can also track down the head of the Department of Parking.
The same with VTA. You know, I know VTA did their, you know, as far as in Alum Rock, you know, a designated, you know, street, rather road for, you know, the buses. Now, I know they had put out a survey. They were also proposing to do that on Story Road. And I'm thinking, have they actually even surveyed the rest of the businesses in those areas? Because a lot of the merchants on Alum Rock suffered for quite a number of years when they did these developments. And I can tell you, just traveling on Alum Rock, I do not see any buses going through those streets or those designated lanes. And it's horrible that, you know, here, traffic has been more congested because VTA decided that this is what our area needs, which I feel was, really was not necessary.
I like what you said. The VTA thinks this is what our area needs. And I think that's really the role I see me playing in this, that it's not about what people think we need. It's about us telling them what it is that we need. So I could definitely ask, when I have that, those projects before me that are coming up, infrastructure questions like that about, you know, overall, that is the city, you know, come to those conclusions. And equally, be happy to help connect you with the head of the Department of Parking and, and I'm sorry, of Public Works for the city to, you know, get them to ask those questions. Without a doubt, I think it's a great point. And I think at the core, it's consistent with what I've been talking about tonight. There's two San Jose's here.
Yes.
And in my, you know, in my speech to get appointed, I don't know if y'all recall, at one point, one of the neighboring cities talked about building a wall between, I think it was Cupertino or Sunnyvale and San Jose. And the council got up and said, we, you know, we oppose that wall. But what I said in my speech was there's already a wall in San Jose. There's the wall that separates east and west. And by virtue of the fact that we are east San Jose, there's recognition that there are two cities. And my biggest mandate, going back to, I think it was Bibiana's point, as to what's important for me this year. It's, it's really to drive home the point and, and change the culture when it comes to our side of town so that we're driving the conversation as to what's best for us. I can't go to your home and tell you what's in your best interest. I just can't. But in many ways, that's what happens to us every day. And I can tell you this much, to someone's point, someone said earlier, we're not going to be victims. I agree with you. And that's one of the approaches I take. And I'm not here saying, woe is us, please. Oh, no, no. I'm saying, this is what we want. This is what we have a right to. And now we're going to do whatever it takes to be at that table. So send me a note on Facebook and I'll grab that information and I'll go ahead and work to connect you with the head of Public Works.
Great. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Great. Next up is Alma. If you'd like to share your audio and video.
Hello. You know, a comment that I was going to make, the previous caller was talking about the, the VTA on Story. And I, you know, I live right on Alum Rock. So I see, I saw that development, years and years of development for that rapid bus. And, and, and when they, when the VTA did that, it, it allowed mixed use, high density housing on Alum Rock. Because now Alum Rock is a transit corridor. So, so, you know, one decision affects other decisions. And so when that development happened, that development or that VTA is allowed to, to happen on Story, it doesn't just affect the businesses, it affects what's built from there, from that point on. So it's very important that the community is very aware of that.
I, I, I agree, Alma. I think, I mean, you remember when I was at, I spoke at Mexican Heritage Plaza, you showed up. And, you know, one of the things I was very clear about, I voted for many affordable housing projects since I've been on the commission. And I'm a big supporter of it. I'm a product of affordable housing. But one of the things I've said very early on is, you know, again, going back to our side of town, there's no question that we have a higher amount of affordable housing projects that are consistently brought our way. And my, and I've said this on the record, it's on the paper. I have said, for us to solve this problem, every part of the city has to have its fair share of affordable housing projects. And I think to your point, Alma, I think that there is absolutely, again, a push to tell us what's going in our neighborhood. You know, we're going to give you guys the social, you know, the, the, the social service programs. We're going to give you the affordable housing. Have fun. Well, we're looking for investment too. We're looking for investment that's going to help strengthen our businesses, that's going to help, that's going to help strengthen our streets so that we're in a position where we can, to an extent, you know, continue thriving off of our own economy. But, go ahead, Alma.
Well, what I was going to say is affordable housing is important for our community. But I'd like to see affordable housing for first time homeowners for our community, not just rentals. And it's always and only rentals that are happening in our community. So to me, it's a continuation of redlining. Because it's only, it's only rentals we don't get to own. And, and how do we build wealth?
Alma, that's exactly right. At the core, this is an economic conversation. This is not about anything other than the allocation of resources that the city has. And, and us saying that it's not okay for other parts of the city to be able to leverage those resources for other parts. Mind you, those are resources that we are also creating, that we are also generating. So it's not like we're saying, give us some of that city money that isn't ours to begin with. We pay sales tax. We, we, we work here. We're also generating, creating that pot. And that is literally the biggest headbutt that a lot of us that do work within city hall are constantly running into. I, I just happen to be a little bit more direct in terms of how I say it. But I also feel that that's my mandate. And Alma, you were there. That's the commitment I made to all of you. And I'm not going to change that.
One just last comment that I was going to make is I live in those Mariposas and right across the street from me, they're planning the 800 unit Silicon Sage at Sunset. It's going to be a huge development, mixed use. And, and now with Form Bay, do you think, I mean, you're talking about Form Based and you're talking about changes. Do you think that if you're able to make change on Form Based, we could get it to apply to that, to that development?
My, my goal is to get everything to apply under the traditional rules, for, for lack of a better word, that are being applied everywhere else.
Yes.
Because to me,
Yes.
a project is better. And I've said this publicly, a project is better when you have input, when you are a part of the conversation. And you, you know, some of the things you say may work, some may not. But if you have that space, and I think Juan just saw this with the Orchard Building, right? Developers are actually pretty open to wanting to have that conversation. But equally, if they're going to get a free pass, they're not going to give it up either. So I think it's incumbent on us to, to make it so that all projects are, where the traditional rules of, of planning in the city are applied to all projects in our city, in our district.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you. Good to see you.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have a question from Robert Reese. Robert, you can share your audio and video.
Hello, Vice Chair Bonilla.
How are you, Robert? You call me Rolando, but thank you for that.
I happened to partake in the study session a week ago on the citywide design guidelines. And I appreciated your chairing the study session, I believe it was, and also you asking questions about context. I'm wondering if the citywide design standards are the application of form-based zoning for all of San Jose. And the reason I say that is the Plan Commission is going to have a much more important role because the city has been flattening the management decision-making structure so that more items have the decision made by the council unless it's appealed by the commission, unless it's appealed to the council. And the design guidelines are going to provide the blueprint to the developer community as to what's going to be expected of them by planning. I appreciate that you continued that study session to August 12th because the design guidelines are 100-page, technical ponderous document. I really like your idea about the special meeting on form-based zoning. And I had an idea of perhaps having a planning commission study session with the council on the design guidelines because they are going to be so important in limiting the discretion of commissioners, just like form-based zoning attempts to limit your discretion.
That's a great idea, Robert. As always, thank you for your input. I think that's, that's a great idea. And, and at the core, I don't, I think you're, you're there. I think the city is through this process, perhaps, you know, trying to apply it citywide. I think the, the bigger issue I have though is that we, we in district five have kind of been the guinea pigs for quite some time, kind of out here on our own. And if it's going to happen, well, then let's, let's talk about when it's going to happen citywide. Otherwise, in my mind, I think it's important that, that we no longer get to be that, that, you know, that, that experimental lab, for lack of better phraseology, because I, I, I think it's unfair. And I think that that is. But I do very much like your idea of a, of a joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission. And I'm going to show you, I'll have some, some colleagues of mine, including former council members that I sit with, who, who will like that idea very much. So, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead and actually connect with the, our chair, raise that idea and see if the city council is open to that conversation. But I think it's a great idea. It makes sense, given that, but, you know, all these processes, he's come before both of these bodies. And there should be some level of alignment in terms of what we're talking about. So I do like that very much. Thank you.
We've had some really good success in district eight with process on community engagement. Early process wherein we're involved before the application is even filed. If, I'm speaking for myself, even though I'm chair of the District Eight Land use committee, we're here to help with some of the things we've learned about how to engage early on before an application is filed.
Robert, I appreciate you. And we've spoken before and I, as I shared with you privately, now publicly, I, I always welcome and actually want input because I think ultimately, you know, we're better working together and we're better bringing all of our experiences into this process. I mean, let's look at what these rules really are at the core. They're a culmination of ideas and experiences that are determining what is in the best interest of the city. So in my mind, the more of us that are talking, the more of us that are collaborating, the more likely we're going to shape what those codes are going to look like as we move into the future. So I do appreciate you, Robert. And as, I'll, I'll take you up on that without a doubt. I mean, Juan, as you know, I've reached out to you as well, wanting to have these conversations. And we're already going to work together on some things as well. So I think, to me, the more, the more, the merrier. And I mean that sincerely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have a question from Janet, who doesn't want to be put on video. She says, thank you for all of the good information. Now, are community planning meetings taking place now during COVID-19? When the city is shut down, concerns are some folks are not users of Zoom and could be disenfranchised by the process. Would the community meetings take letters slash email in lieu of meeting via Zoom? I'm basically asking about the planning process harder to getting to the planning commission. Thanks again.
Well, the answer is yes. The, the, one of the things that we had talked about as a commission. And now I have all, majority of my colleagues are all new and I know they're community minded as well. We really want to be accessible. It's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. It's one of the reasons that I, I go out of my way to be accessible. So from a procedural standpoint, our meetings are every other Wednesday night. And there is the option by which to send email comments to the full commission. You can send comments to commissioners individually, or in my case, you can send comments to me as well through my Facebook page. And all those comments do get shared with the city and they do get shared with all of my colleagues as well. So if you don't want to participate in Zoom or can't participate with Zoom, there is a level of ability in terms of how you can participate. And then of course, there's the, the traditional way that, you know, which I, I like, I like the letter. You know, you can still send the letter and every one of those letters that get sent to the planning commission, your planning staff sends to every single one of us on the commission to, to look at. So there are multiple ways by which to communicate with us. Zoom is not the only way. Zoom is the way to do it in real time, the night of the meeting. However, you can submit comments and letters prior to the meeting on a particular issue or a general issue that's of concern to you. And we do read it, we do evaluate it. And I can tell you, those comments go a long way in terms of our thinking process and in terms of the questions that we ask. I know with me, I'll give you a great example. Uh, I know with me, I'll give you a great example. Uh, there's a project in Berriessa, uh, where the Charcot Extension, which was basically an overpass in a community, uh, that actually took a piece of a school, like, school district land field, right next to a kids' athletic field. Uh, I was, uh, contacted by a member of the community who, uh, felt he needed some help and wanted some questions, uh, asked. And I made myself available and I asked all of his questions and was able to even ask follow-up questions and that helped him uh, in formulating his case before the city council. So a lot of us in that sense, uh, I could speak for myself specifically. Uh, I actually think that that's tremendously helpful and very much in line with how I view this position. I don't view this position as, you know, Rolando Bonilla, you know, twenty-four years in government, law degree, you know, the all-knowing. I view this position as I am a vehicle by which to have the conversation you want to have. I'm your access. So I, I welcome those questions. I welcome, uh, those emails. Uh, I welcome all of that, uh, because I do use it.
All right. So next, we have a comment from Melissa who says, I'd also like to second the need to reach out to neighborhood associations. Trudy, who doesn't want to be a panelist, asks, aware of any plans for Story and White?
Um, specifically, is there anything specific or just generally speaking?
Generally speaking, I do have some information after you go.
Okay. I think Story and White's a good example of what I was talking about earlier. I think, uh, when, when you look at a lot of our main thoroughfares, I mean, it's clear that they're in need of investment, uh, they're in need of some support, uh, in terms of bringing up to date a, a lot of these establishments. So I'm, I would imagine, and I've spoken to plenty of these businesses, they too would like that. The, the issue that they have, more so now with COVID is, is a lack of resource. So I personally, with Story and White, Alum Rock Village as well, uh, would like to see, uh, and I'm already talking out loud, about some sort of investment from the city, uh, to help give these small businesses the opportunity by which to, to, to improve their place of business, which encourage more people to come spend dollars. Uh, I spent a lot of time in that corridor. I don't live that far from there. Uh, so for me, that's really important right now. Um, and it's something that I'm going to continue talking about and, you know, hopefully sooner rather than later turning into reality because the city does have a track record of doing that. So it's not like we're asking for something that's never been done before. It's something that's very clearly been done before, just hasn't really been done in our side of town since the end of redevelopment.
And, and this is Juan. So I am on the Invision San Jose 2040 Task Force that is revisiting the, uh, elements of the general plan. And what I was able to do with the supportive community members who submitted emails to the task force was uh, motion and the motion was seconded and there was a, uh, approval to recommend to the city council that Story Road from White Road down to, I believe it's King Road, be designated a, an urban village. And I know we've heard horror stories about Alum Rock and the urban village. Uh, this would be a, a, a true effort at an urban village where, uh, if the council approves it, when the recommendations go to council from the task force, uh, there would be a plan drawn. It might take a couple of years, a year or two. And, uh, what that would do is, uh, open up this area for, uh, revi- revitalization, I think. And so it was important to get that because, uh, otherwise, what I learned is, uh, development doesn't occur without the opportunity. And the community will have a say, there will be community meetings. Um, and so the future of this strip of road will, um, improve, I think. And so, so that's what I want to say. And so how far is that? Uh, I believe the task force will provide recommendations to the city council in the next few months. Uh, and then assuming that is approved, that recommendation is approved, then somewhere down the road, a plan will be created with community input. It will not be like, uh, whatever happened at Alum Rock. Rolando, let me ask you a question. So we know that Alum Rock is currently a fiasco in terms of, uh, whatever that zoning was called. And is there a way to change that or is that now permanent?
I mean, I need to give you change. I mean, it's, it's the city council. They're the ultimate legislative body. They can make those changes. Uh, I, you know, I, I go back to the Story and White question. We're all, East San Jose is always going to get something, right? They're all, in terms of the plan. That's not the hurdle. The hurdle is the actual implementation of the plan and putting us on the priority side of these lists. I mean, it took what, thirty years to finally get Light Rail approved all the way to East Ridge? And look at the fight to get, uh, BART to the Alum Rock part of our city, of our district. That is the consistent theme that I'm getting at. We'll always, there will always be a plan that we'll get into. There will always be a beautiful, majestic, uh, rainbows and unicorns and pots of gold, you know, section for us to get excited about. The problem though is that I want to be able to see a lot of this in, 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 in as rapid a rate as other parts of the city. I want to be able to enjoy it while I'm still alive, not when my kids have grandkids. And my kids are eight, six and six, by the way. That is really what I'm getting at. That the issue with us is always, we get into the plans. There was a plan to get us the VTA Light Rail, uh, in the books about twenty years ago, thirty years ago. But it took thirty years to finally get it and it took a fight. And it took the city and the VTA and all these different players who were opposing it. Same with the Alum Rock to BART plan, same with Fire Station Number Two. So we have a little trend going here. We get into the books, we have these beautiful plans, but when it's actually time to execute, oops, sorry, not enough resources. Oops, sorry, you know, other, other priorities have taken over and we always stay in the back of the bus. That is really one of the things that in my mind, we're trying to change now. I think one with your role on the task force, with my role on the planning commission, with your role as members of the community, we're going to be a lot more sophisticated in saying, no, not only do we want to get in the plan, we actually want to make sure that there's a priority for the implementation of that plan. That's literally where the, the game kind of gets disjointed for us.
Peggy, let me see. I'm sorry, I should have made you a panelist. I'll make you a panelist, but she asked, what are the plans for the roving homeless folks who are being moved again and again as communities complain about them? I don't know if you could speak to that?
You know, um, it's out of my purview, uh, because I, I deal with planning issues, but I think it goes back to the theme of the night with me. I think, um, this is an example, uh, and I drive by that every day. I mean, there's no question that folks with at home, uh, need support right now. Uh, there needs to be, uh, this is where the county needs to step up and really support the city with the necessary mental health services, affordable, you know, care services, uh, in order to get some of these, uh, folks off of the streets. That said, the fundamental reality is, I mean, you, you don't need to call a complaint to the city to know that we have that all over our district. Um, and back to someone, someone said earlier, District Seven, the same thing. Um, again, I think for me, the question is, why, why is it that in these particular districts, there seems to be a laissez-faire approach, right? Hands off. Uh, yet, I would, I would, I would argue that there are other parts of the city that we, we drive through as well and don't see it. That's not a coincidence. Uh, that's, that's, that's exactly my point. There is a strategic decision-making process that makes this okay here. But if this were to happen elsewhere, not so much. And that's, that's really the role I'm trying to play right now with this position, which is, uh, although I'm in planning, I'm also getting out of just planning and having a broader conversation on a myriad of topics because in my mind, it's really all the same. It's, it's a choice that's being made and it's equity. And let me tell you why I could, I could speak so deliberately when I talk about this choice. I worked at City Hall. I was a staffer. I saw this. I had this fight all the time. I had this fight when it came to District Five issues. And, and there are things that we can point to that happened because of that fight. But I, I would see it all the time. There were folks that would come in and, you know, they, they had a particular issue resolved with us. We wanted to have, you know, longer discussions and meetings and oops, wow, budget process is over. Sorry, next fiscal year. That, that's why I can say that I lived it.
All right. And Janet, who I believe doesn't-
Before we, before we move on, I just want to say, I don't want to say all the services focus in District Five. I think District Two would say the same. The issue is, is that these folks keep moving around from spot to spot and as each, each community complains and it gets cleaned up and they move on, it, the issue never really gets addressed. And so it just shifts all around the community. And I'm sure you've heard it before, you've seen it before, you worked at City Hall, I work at the MRK Library, so I know all about the housing. The issue is, is that I am part of the next door, you know, neighborhood, whatever. And this topic is always being discussed, always being discussed. And so as part of planning, I guess I want to throw back to you, what can be done? So I know that some people are being housed in hotels now. Thank God for that. But not everybody is. So are there being plans made for when the city no longer is paying for people to be in motels? Where are they going to go? Because I just don't want to see more people being here, especially in the east side, you know, camping at the end of some street and then, you know, neighbors are freaking out and reacting and, you know, it's just the same cycle over and over and over. What can we do?
I agree, Peggy. Uh, within my purview, one thing I have done, uh, you know, uh, I had an affordable project, affordable housing project in South San Jose. About two hundred neighbors that were opposing it. It was a senior-specific affordable housing project. And they were opposing it. And, you know, the arguments, some valid, some not so valid. And one of the things I said that night when I motioned to approve it, uh, same with, was that if we're going to actually solve the homeless crisis, we actually have to provide affordable housing. And equally, what I said is, and that affordable housing, that duty to maintain that affordable housing needs to be spread out throughout the city equally. So what I have been doing has been very clear that I am a big proponent of affordable housing. Uh, my caveat being that that affordable housing has to be considered throughout the city. Now, I'll tell you, I think the, the beauty to that is that you're finding that there's a whole new movement of folks that are recognizing that that's not only the equitable way, but it's the humane way. None of us want to see our neighbors living on the street going through hard times. Uh, we're all humans. We care. We're in public service because we care. So one of the things I've done very clearly, very publicly has been to support these projects, even in the face of strong opposition. Because if I'm not willing to stand up to that opposition and vote in favor of these projects, knowing there's a demand for them, then why am I there? Right? We're not going to solve any problems. Now, is, is the problem so simple that housing alone is going to solve it? We, we, we know that's not the case. We know that some folks are dealing with some really difficult mental health issues, addiction issues, and that's where the county can step in. But there are plenty of folks out there too who can benefit from this housing. And I've been very clear, very public about the fact that I, I want to approve as many of these projects as possible. As long as they, you know, meet the criteria that's important to me, have those conversations with the community. Uh, and, and my job is to, you know, take the lumps a little bit. Uh, if folks oppose it, I get it. Uh, if there's some, if there's some credible reasons as to why, let's ask the why and see if we can correct it. Uh, but just a knee-jerk reaction that I don't want that project is not good enough for me. So I am supporting those projects because we do need more of that, more of that housing. A lot of our, plus, I mean, we saw with COVID, right? We have school districts in our area that the moment we sheltered in place, about a month after, about ten percent of the student population has completely left the area. We have, uh, within a lot of our school districts in our district, we have, uh, a lot of families that are literally hanging on for dear life, uh, living, you know, six to seven, uh, in, in a small apartment, trying to access these free food programs. So, uh, we're not going to solve that problem if we don't build more housing, affordable housing, uh, and, and I'm a big proponent of that. Um, my job though, as, as, as someone that represents you in District Five, i- is to make sure that it's being spread out equitably. Uh, but that's one way to solve the problem, not the only way, but that's definitely the way that I can be helpful within the purview of what I do.
All right. We have one more question and then Robert, I, I see that you'd like to speak. So after that question, we'll get to it. First, I will note Sandra Garcia says, Zoom provides using your phone to call and listen in regardless if it is a smartphone or not. So that's true. Whenever there's a Zoom invite, there's usually a phone number that you could call on a regular phone. Linda says, is that a Twitter handle about your, the username you provided earlier? And what I could do if, if this makes sense is, I have a list of the people who registered. I could provide them with uh, a link to your contact information, uh, Rolando and, um, and then, uh, will that work?
Yeah, it's, it's a Facebook handle, uh, and please, yes, share my contact information. Uh, the, uh, the Facebook page is the easiest way by which to, to get ahold of me.
Will do. And Janet, who doesn't want to be on Zoom says, uh, or on camera, we need permit document- documentation updated on city website. It is lacking and more important now that we do not have physical access to the San Jose Planning Department.
What, what, what does she mean by that? Just for, to clarify.
Great question. It just says, we need permit documentation updated on city website.
Okay. Uh, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask planning staff, uh, how it is that we update.
Oh, she just said she can talk. Thank you, Janet. So let me promote you to panelists. This is the last question, then we'll go to Robert. Pamela, I can't find you. Why? Or Janet? It's because I was reading the wrong name. Yay. All right, Janet, you can share your screen or share your video and audio.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I appreciate your time and thanks for the forum. Yeah, what I'm talking about is on the planning department, under permits, there might be a lot of different permits, um, for a new project or a zoning or whatever. But what's not there are the documents that are attached to it. And ever since COVID, nothing has really been updated in terms of actual documents. So we can't really get in and see what's going on and as a community, talk to it as much as we might be able to if, you know, the city was open. That's what I'm talking about.
Gotcha. That's, that's helpful. And Janet, thank you for the question. Uh, I will actually ask, uh, Rosalind Huey, the, the director of the, the planning department, uh, that question. Uh, and, uh, if you send me your email, uh, I'd be happy to send a response back to you or even get, get in, get you in touch with them. So you can also open up that line of communication and have that dialogue with planning staff. I think that would be really helpful too.
Thank you, everyone, for joining. All right, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.